All right, we'll get started. I'll call this meeting in order. Six thirty-one P M. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Craig, here.
Dolphin here.
Harvey here.
Schneider here.
Cunnings here.
Here is here. Whole house. We have in front of me a verification of proper reading. This is being posted. Bring this down to the agenda. I am aware of a few changes to the agenda this evening. One, we'll add in under board reports an item D, which will be a booster club presentation. Secondly, we will add. On action items, staff positions, we have two additional resignations. Wayne Olson and the Mackenzie Salamaggy. Wayne is custodian and Mackenzie is teaching language staff. Any other items to note on the agenda this evening? Here are none, but for motion approved with the operations. I saw move. Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve the agenda with said additions. All those in favor? Aye. Post. Motion carries on the six oh zero seven. Brings us to approving minutes from previous meetings. And we'll start first with the policy committee meeting from Monday, June tenth. Any noted changes here? Looked all correct to me, Mr. Craig. Very good. Yes, you and I will. I will move for approval. So I've got a motion by Mr. Craig, seconded by himself, to approve the policy committee meeting minutes as presented. All those in favor? Aye. Post. Takes us to the action of minutes for approval of the finance committee meeting held on Wednesday, June twelfth. Any noted changes here or corrections?
I think it was Governor Knight pregnant for that as well, so I'll.
Okay. Got motion by Ms. Quan. If someone liked to second those minutes. Seconded by Mr. Yurgis. All those in favor of approval of the finance committee meeting minutes? Aye. Post. Motion carries seven oh vote. Takes us to the action of minutes from the finance committee meeting in the closed version. Said me. Any changes to the closed minutes? The closed minutes of the finance committee?
I'll move to the closed minutes.
Okay, I've got a motion by Ms. Quan, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor? Aye. Post. Brings us to the minutes of the regular board meeting from Wednesday, June twelfth, in the open session. Any changes here? I will move for approval. Second. Got a motion by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Dolphin, to approve said regular board meeting minutes from Wednesday, June twelfth. All those in favor? Aye. Post. Motion carries seven oh vote. And finally, the minutes of the regular board meeting from Wednesday till June twelfth in the closed session.
I make motion to approve for a regular board meeting, June second, closed session. June twelfth.
For seconded that motion? Second. Okay. So the motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Mr. Dolphin, to approve as presented on the closed session meeting minutes from Wednesday, June twelfth. All those in favor? Aye. Post. Motion carries seven. All right, moving right along. Goes to board reports. I do not see any of our student representatives here this evening. Mr. Carr is also not present. So we'll start with the Lenny Brown's committee meeting from June twenty-fifth meeting. Members, feel free to share your thoughts of our last meeting and discuss the proposed additions or construction work associated with the master plan and addition of the baseball, softball, and football practice. Would you like to share? We're going to talk about it later this evening. The action items, but.
Yeah, we kind of just went through the preliminary cost estimates for the baseball field. Top ball field and potential soccer slash football training field. I want to try and question some things in specific fact for the administration to review for questions.
You want to add, Jeremy?
Yeah, that's about it. Building softball field is expensive, but it's got to be done.
So yeah, I mean, I would concur that we reviewed the line item estimates. The administration already did whittle it down. Obviously, the goal is to whittle it down as much as we can to effectively still accomplish the same result. But there's still a lot of work to do there. That was a good meeting. Get through the whole list. There's a lot to it. Any questions, board members? All right, we'll move right along to item D, and I will turn the floor over to the Waterloo Booster Club for a presentation this evening. Ladies, please go ahead and introduce yourself and take it away.
Hi, I'm Rachel Cephalou. I am on the booster board. This is Leslie Fugan. Probably all know her. She's also on board, and we are, we face some challenges as boosters, as everyone does, with issues getting volunteers and time. Everybody's busy. People aren't super excited about such activities anymore. However, the boosters do provide the school district with a lot, and we are trying to streamline some of our cup racing. So with what Leslie just passed out, this is what we would like to send out to businesses. Normally, we will approach businesses in the area a couple of times a year, depending on what our needs are. We've reviewed over the last couple of years the various times that we do go to businesses. We've tried to put them all in this second page so that we go once, and anything that you want to advertise with or donate to is all encompassed in that, so that we only have to bother you once, and we only have to send out one letter. We only have to make one phone call. So it saves us time. It saves them time. It helps everybody budget so that we do it once. The new items that we are here for approval. The single game sponsorship during a winter sport game. Also a single game sponsorship during the fall sport, and then advertising spots on the scoring table for the rotating sign that is in the fieldhouse. Those are advertising spots that have not been sold before, and so we would like, that's ultimately what we're asking for permission. In a, you know, the rest of it, we've all done before. As far as advertising in the event programs and table sponsorships and event sponsorships for our spring fundraiser. So that, that is all current. So we request this to be approved, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. We can make adjustments. We are under a bit of a deadline. So it's something that we do, that we wouldn't appreciate about on today. If not, honestly, it puts us back to next year, and we will be going to businesses multiple times. If it, which, if that's what it takes, then that's what it takes, but that's kind of where we are at this point. So hopefully. Hopefully, it's self-explanatory, but.
Yeah, and we'll open it up for board questions, but can you, can you tell me more about the deadline? Where do our deadlines?
So the deadline is, we need new programs for football season. So you start working backwards from the start of football season, and with printing deadlines and the fact that we've got to, you know, we have to approach businesses, give them time to review it, we have to have time to put the program together. And so when you start to back that up, football season starts, or practice starts beginning of August. I think scrimmage is, what, two weeks in? So middle of August, we need about two weeks to put them together and get it printed at minimum. So that, that puts us before your next board meeting. It is what it is. So.
And that was specifically pertaining to. I guess part of this, the new items that you're looking to sell this year?
Right, so the, the new items is the, so we would sell sponsorships for the different sporting events during winter and fall. So that would include, we're going to have signs printed so that we can put them out, or put the sign out that we have printed for that particular business, out for display like in the concession area. The announcers would announce that during the games so that it was a bit more visible and, you know, without both hearing it over and over again, you know, kind of, they, you know, they do it all over place that way, right? Would announcers, so that's a different sponsorship that fields and programs and.
Okay. Matthew, you want me to talk about the policy stuff?
Sure.
Okay.
So just to provide some clarification for the board members, so we're in a little bit of a, what came first, the chicken or the egg situation tonight? So your policy that you're giving final approval to tonight would allow them to do what they're asking. Right? We've never had a policy before about putting, you know, displaying promotional, you know, stuff on like the scorer's table or hanging signs or banners or those kinds of things. We've never allowed that before. But you do have a policy that you've passed along, you know, so far in your first and second reading to allow that. But the policy also says that you have the jurisdiction to give final review to what those signs say and who is on those signs for obvious reasons. So I don't know if it would be enough, Rachel, Leslie, for the board to kind of give you the thumbs up to go ahead and start doing this, but with the understanding that, you know, they would need to have final approval over, you know, what those particular signs or banners or so forth might be. We've done the programs before. We've done the half court. We've done the T-shirt toss. Fundraiser night, sprinkles, I think are all the things that we've done in the past. But there's a few things that are new tonight, that again, you do have a policy that you're approving later tonight to allow happen with the gavion, that we have final say over what's on the signs.
Would you want a list of the donors before, or do you want to see like a mockup of the sign for those types of people? Because I can imagine a few businesses that might, you know.
Well, we wanted to be, we wanted to be school coke, right?
Yes.
Who are advertising that some, that would be our deserved effort of the board policy. I believe that's what the, what the policy speaks to, is to make sure we're reviewing the concept and who we're allowing. When the districts allow you to, with our student athletes. So upon a final review, yeah, I think we would want to know exactly who, who it is, what business, sponsored what. The concept, obviously, as it's passed a couple of readings, I think we've learned, is on board with the concept. That's why we have it in our first responses, but.
Wouldn't we have to meet to do the final, because like if they're in crunch time and then they have to send it, would it be appropriate to just have an email sent to us and then a little bit of an email? Because I'm just trying to think about time for you guys, because. Which, which we very much appreciate. I guess the question is, are we talking, like, is it a type of business that we would want to avoid? Like, talk about alcohol, tobacco, firearms, that sort of thing, that we would not. Gain sponsorship. Would not do a game sponsorship for, and in that case, because we have had local establishments that do serve alcohol sponsor our fundraiser night, but children under the age of eighteen are not allowed to do that. So that is why that has been allowed in the past. And that would be a case where those businesses would just not get the letter. They're not up for, you know, they would not be approved, so they cannot sponsor at that level. It would have, they would have to do something else, which we can adjust for that, if that's what we need to do. So because there are many of those businesses that are very supportive of the school, and we wouldn't want to necessarily leave them out completely, but I do understand concern.
So I hear there's a question, Sarah, later question, that yeah, officially to approve, we'd have to do that in a meeting. And we're not on the agenda to see, but again, it's typically in my head, you know, where we have to first approve our new policy to actually get into that, so the next meeting is our next logical ability to do that. But that's where Brian brought up, you know, we can approve on the concept. It's not an official approval, but unless a board member wants to voice concerns now with what they're proposing, you know, we would have to finalize it at the next meeting. Or we have to have a special meeting to approve that. So is there a board member who has concern with what's proposed? Nope. Okay. So, and again, we want to give guidance on types of sponsors. I think that's really what we're talking about here, and you said it, we're handling it. There are certain things we don't want to be promoting in our.
We understand that, yes.
I think if you guys use your best judgment of who you bring back to us, there's a very high probability that it's going to just be approved, and we don't have an issue. Fair statement, board members?
Yep.
But we will have to, if you can just bring us back to the next meeting, what would be on the agenda and just lay out here. Here's who it is. Here's what they're going to do and.
So we have permission to send this to an appropriate list, list of potential donors. Right. And we are back on the next agenda for next month?
We will make sure you're on the next agenda.
Okay.
So I do think, you know, it would be important for the board to weigh in on, you know, like Rachel said, in the past, you know, they've had various establishments sponsor their spring fundraiser night that's only adults. You know, there, there's a difference between that and, you know, a sign that you're going to hang in the concession stand at school in front of all the kids. So I don't know if you want to weigh in on, you know, what some businesses would be allowed to do and what others they might not be able to, because there certainly is a wide array of fundraising efforts here that some might be appropriate for and some not. But your policy, again, only speaks to the things that will be hung at school. Banner, signs, et cetera.
So I guess my question for that would be, if it, if it involves alcohol, tobacco, or firearms, then that should probably be excluded. Then you have questions like bowling alleys or establishments that make a revenue off of food, or, right. Or, so, right, but still you include that. So how, that would be the, most of it's pretty clear, but that would be kind of the gray area. And I would want to send it to someone and say, sponsor, and then say, we love that. We're going to give you a thousand dollars. And then have to go back to them and say, I'm sorry, I really can't take your money.
I'm okay with the gray area. Yeah. Bowling alleys, restaurants. Other gray areas.
Do you mean bars? I would think that a bar is pretty clear that we probably shouldn't have. Yeah, like they can, they can be at our adult fundraiser night, but not in the building. Or on the grounds. Their products can't be on the grounds. The product, if the product that they're selling, the majority of products can't be on the grounds, then they can't advertise on the grounds.
Any other board member? Thoughts, input? Everyone agrees on that? Okay. So it would be on the agenda, and you'll bring us back to finalized lists, and we'll approve for our policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you guys are free to exist, stay as well if you prefer.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, move right along. We'll get into the approval of bills of vouchers. Are there any questions, unanswered questions regards to the bills of vouchers? Treasurers report superintendent's listing of disbursements through June thirtieth, or the district receipts for the month. Also a move for approval of all three. Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve the treasurer's report, the superintendent listing the disbursements, and the district receipts for the month of June. It's a roll call vote. Craig, yes.
Dolphin, yes.
Harvey, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Harvey, yes. Cummings, yes.
Yurgis, yes.
All right, motion carries on the seven oh vote. Do we have any legislative updates this evening?
I did attend the CISA two meeting on the twentieth, with Lenny Brown. And we had Tom McCarthy that spoke. He's part of EPI. It was very interesting. You could hear the frustration he has as well about the funding for schools and how it's just not working. There's, you know, four hundred and twenty districts that are escalating and having to go out for reparendums in New York. So it's in the works. They're trying to figure out a new, a new way and be able to give more funding for special ed and just a lot of different areas. So CISA is working really hard to try to figure out that. So it was a pretty good, it was a good meeting. Like I said, everyone in the room had frustration over the funding. So it's not just our school. It's all of them.
Yeah, there was some stuff that circulated statewide, too. I didn't get a chance to kind of verify the numbers, but I can tell you what I saw. Because there's been a lot of discussion about the Milwaukee public school system and their giant referendum that they're looking to and how that affects, because their expenditures then affect all the other schools in the district, in the state as well. And that if that would pass and go through, Waterloo would lose over a hundred thousand dollars in funding due to that.
They did bring out that as well.
Yeah. So, and then, of course, that, that was all being worked on, and now Madison's talking about it, too, so that will have a big effect also. So what others do, you know, affects the pot for everyone else. So we could see some significant decreases in funding based on what two of the largest districts in the state end up doing in terms of referendum and spending going forward also. So that's an interesting thing we haven't seen in a really long time.
Yeah, and they are escalating it. I mean, there's something, I mean, they were talking about lawsuits and, because the formula that they have set up is just, like they said, is not working. So, yeah, so it's interesting. And if you ever want to know, CISA two, you can get on their like reports, and they send them monthly to let you know exactly what's happening and where they're going to be at, so. And if not, I can just update you guys every month on it.
That'd be perfect.
Yeah. So that's all I have.
Thank you for the update. Any announcements this evening? Moving to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to give public input? All right, moving right along. We'll get into new business. Action item A is staff positions. We had on the agenda two resignations. There's a large list here of employment positions for approval. Any discussion on the staff position, positions this evening? I would, I plan to stay here regarding all the volunteers. Certainly knows that. As I've spoken in the past, I have curious board thoughts on volunteers. Obviously, it's good that people want to give their time to work with our sports programs, but we don't have any criteria for volunteers or any things that binds them to anything, really. I don't know if any other board members have concerns, questions? Just on the only one sport. Any more discussion on that? Volunteers.
How many years would be allowed to volunteer for both then?
Yeah, it's been on and off, I think, for forever. We went to stretch for a while there, where we didn't have very many, if any, but recently it's become popular again. So we've had quite a few for football, softball, basketball, almost everything.
All right, also a move for approval. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve all positions as presented. Make sure we're noting Wayne Olson and Mackenzie Salamaggy. That's what they're right? All those in favor? Aye. Post. And please note, I have staying on the volunteers for football. Moving right along. Action item B, property liability auto workers' compensation. Been working through renewals, and it's recommended. And we approved a renewal as presented. Again, ask for some detail on that renewal. I don't know if any of the board members did. The cost comparison, what the cost is up substantially, but it looks that this is the best, best option to move forward for the district by maintaining a level of liability coverage. And the insurance world is going up. It's just across the board. Would you agree?
I, I agree, and we are reaching out to other initiatives to see, you know, for next year, if you're making better. So I'll keep you posted on that. What was the percentage? Is it around like twenty-five thousand?
It's like a hundred and forty-six, is that what?
One forty-six, yeah.
Total, like, percentage?
Is our school district, vacation free, teachers, workers' comp, or are all teachers in the state in the same? Waterloo, all of those, water, just water, like, not just teachers, support staff, administrators, kitchen. Waterloo, all employees, water, just water, employees, not just teachers, support staff, administrators, kitchen, so on and so forth.
And that stayed the same, and we cut the same dividend at thirty percent, so.
All right.
That was very reasonable.
Good. Any other discussion? And I look for more.
I'll sit. I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Yurgis will make the motion to approve as presented, seconded by Mr. Crave. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, seven. We have an early graduation request from Derek Kowalski. It's recommended that this be approved. I believe you have a immunity packets or requests to your packet, whatever that was written. Any questions regarding the early graduation request?
I know this is the second one in the last couple of months. It's, I don't recall these in the past. Is this kind of like new trend or do, and wrap up school and move on?
Yeah, we definitely see the increase recently in these types of requests, or different reasons, of course, but.
I'll vote for approval.
I'll sit.
I'll second. So I've got a motion by Mr. Crave, seconded by Mr. Dolphin, to approve the early graduation request as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Brings us to action I of B, student fees and food service pricing. Listened on your former package, you've got the previous year's costs, along with the proposed new costs, as you can see, there's slight increases across the board. We've got the entire list in the board packet, but I guess the highlight of this in the informal packet. Is there any questions here on the nickel increases across the board? Then the headphones and the recorders and the yearbooks have gone up a bit, a touch more. Can you refresh my memory? How did we, how did we end the fiscal year on food service?
Um, I think about twenty-seven thousand. Yeah, so we're not required to raise food service prices by a specific amount if you were. Were, were to.
In the black?
Yeah, in the black.
And how many, can you quantify the amounts to buy this stuff as, takes the food services?
This is about five hundred lunches a day, so. It's like, no, two out of seven, fifty, sixty or some percent.
Yeah. Any questions, board members? And move me approve.
I'll use the second.
Got a motion by Mr. Dolphin, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve the student fees and food service pricing as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, seven. Action I of E, the preliminary budget for softball, baseball, and football. So we had a good discussion in the committee meeting, where we went through everything line by line. Been able to, at this point, filter down. As presented here, it's a budget of two point four, two point eight million. It's a lot of money. We've got preliminary numbers, but what we're looking to do is approve moving forward here to get refined estimates from the players or the contractors and services that we need to proceed here.
So the action we were discussing today is just the finalized proposal?
Yeah, we're not, I mean, we're either moving forward or we're not moving forward, but we don't have a finalized cost, you know? We don't have a finalized scope of work. So we can't sit here today and say it's gonna be two point four three seven million to get this done. There's still work to be done to go there, but it's somewhat of a preliminary approval of moving forward, because we don't want to be, I guess, in essence, telling contractors to move forward to spend money if we're gonna pull the plug and not proceed on later. So, I mean, ultimately, we gotta get, it's like plans and all that rules, and I'll forbid we'll, we'll do that, the right, whatever thing will be.
Yeah, and that kind, that's kind of what it comes down to, right? You don't, it doesn't pay to, pay the engineering company to design a press box and then go bid on a press box if you have no plans of bidding a press box or building a press box. So it's kind of the what, what's in and what's out, but you still will have plenty of opportunity to look at what comes in from the numbers and say, yeah, we thought we might do this, but now we're not gonna, or, eh, we didn't think we'll do this. Yeah, maybe we will. So that's all coming, but we just needed to get it refined so that we can provide, you know, point of beginnings and create a little more direction on where they should focus their time and efforts.
So discussion?
Where do we anticipate two point eight million dollars coming from?
So it was discussed in the meeting. I mean, again, you wouldn't go to referendum, the school would probably go to a loan to pay for that. And amortize it out and move with bonds and, projected costs, sorry, I don't remember exactly, but maybe Susie or Ryan can help with. It's a payment of a hundred, a hundred thousand a year for extra years.
Yeah, we just did, you know, took a, a guess at it, and obviously, you know, I don't think there's an appetite from the community to go to referendum. It's certainly not something we can support within our general budget, so you're looking at borrowing the money. So if you borrow money at five percent on a fifteen-year bond, you know, you can work on some calculated payments with that, those figures.
So maybe we should back up just a pair here. Have we all agreed on what the, what I would call the, the scope of work is to be, and we have? You know, on top of, with, with that, what, what's all to be done? I mean, aside from how much it's gonna cost, and, and obviously, that kind of informs what you want to do, but now that we have a general idea of what these things are gonna cost, are we all in agreement that we want to put in the baseball field, put in the softball field, and put in a plaza? Are we all in agreement there?
You, you have a, saying that no football or soccer or practice field?
No, that's what the entire, yeah, that's what the, the two point four to two point eight is some version of everything.
Right. And what I'm kind of throwing out there is, is that what we've all agreed we want to do? I don't know that, I remember that meeting where we all agreed to that.
We all kind of modeled it out. So when you say plaza, that means like concession stand or?
What, if you remember recall in the master plan, there was a set of bedding cages, there's a center area, there's a parking lot. I guess that's what I'm speaking is interpreting what Bill calls a plaza.
Well, that's what's listed here, that's all.
Sure.
It's subtotal for phase one.
Yep.
And we got, yeah, so.
So what I could, I could speak to the committee meeting, we were at, we went through this line by line, looked at how the, the construction phasing, et cetera, and most effective way to, to be spending said money would be doing some version of all of these at once. Because if you only pick one thing, you're gonna ruin the field that's already down there. And if you take up the space, you're gonna have to do the, when you go do the grading, the only way to go about this grading efficiently is if you're doing all the grading at once. So we had the conversations of, you know, do you run the, do you run the conduit and wires for the lights, but you don't put the lights in right away? I can't remember some of the line items for a press box. That was a hundred grand or something. That's not what we're doing. So that, in our first committee meeting, when we looked through this, we revised, revised the numbers, and the admin had already done some of that, but when we get out of the meeting, we were in agreement that, that we have a Title IX concern, we have to address, and if you're going to spend the money, we should spend it the, the most effective way possible. But we're some of the main risks that Crave brought us. But that's exactly why this is on your bill. Because if we are not getting forward this, we still have a problem we have to solve.
So the things that we did cross off, that I showed that are crossed off, like mulch and all that, is, is that not needed to complete? To get across, I'm confused by that.
The mulch.
And then we.
The overall site grading, all the whole project. All the whole projects on the utilization pool, on softball, baseball, and cramp, soccer, football, and softball. That's what we're supposed to do.
We don't need lighting? I'm not, I don't have games at night? I just don't know, what are we gonna do about bathrooms? Is there gonna be bathrooms in that plaza?
That was a two hundred and forty thousand.
I'm just asking the question.
These are, these are the exact things you went through in the committee meeting. Oh, well. Okay, so draw on the line. Where are you drawing the line? What are we doing and what are we not, or?
Well, I think what she's asking is, is part of that three hundred eighty-one thousand, does that include the bathrooms or not?
In the plaza, no? So there's no, gonna be no bathrooms? What are we gonna do then?
And I think the question was brought up, do you want to invest in all this field and all this, and then have quarter bodies down there? Is that the look you want?
Yeah, we can, we can either hope at the school, if people get buck, or you have the great quarter bodies in. Those would be the cheapest ways to go, of course.
And what accounts for the significant difference between baseball and softball? Subtotal for phase one cost. The baseball cost is listed at six hundred and forty thousand, while softball's listed at three hundred and seventy-six thousand?
It's much bigger for you.
It's, it's almost twice the square footage.
So it's simply the size that accounts for that?
Yeah, if you look at the map where they grew on the baseball field and softball field, the baseball field is huge. It dwarfs the softball field.
Yeah.
If I'm looking at the plan, so there's like drainage tiles planned for the baseball field, and nothing like that planned for softball. I don't know construction, like, is that irrelevant for softball?
So for trench.
Trench, trench for softball.
Trench, training's involved, and that's some of what we did, is we riddled through, it appeared that they had duplicity in some of their estimates here.
Yeah, I'm sure on their site, utilities, utilities have future quality, that show the drainage.
Trench drains, if that's the one you're talking about.
It's a plaza, specifically for what they had, mainly includes those three line items, but.
So it's basically payment.
Yeah. It's like a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars a paper, which seems to be high upon initial observation.
Yeah, basically parking lot.
Right.
So, so guys, the three eighty-one, that's basically a parking lot. Where did the two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for contingency come from? Is that their numbers, or is that just something we, we threw in because we're concerned that we just want to have enough in the budget, or?
I believe that's their contingency number.
Was that based on the entire six million?
Yeah, it's pretty standard. They have it in the schedule.
So it's ten percent of this number, I see that makes a whole sense. So ideally, if we can narrow down this number here, this two point three million, these numbers go down in accordance with.
Right.
That's ten percent of that, that's six percent.
It's all percent, which generates.
Ten, ten plus. Design services. There are extra twenty-five percent come over.
Yep. So thoughts?
I mean.
Across the board here.
Yeah, I guess the two point nine, like, how does it put our school, like, what type of position does it put us in with doing this with the bonds? Like, I mean, has other, have you seen other schools have to do this because they beat law, they have a referendum, like, financially, what type of position are we gonna be in? If there's, I'm not saying there's gonna be another pandemic, but I'm just saying, like, where are we at, where are we gonna be at financially? Because this is, this is pretty major to take out a, a bond for this. Am I, am I thinking crazy here, or is anyone else concerned?
No, I think it's, I'm starting to all of us.
Is, is the site preparation, would that go down if we didn't do the baseball field or the parking lot?
Sure, they're all generated, so. So maybe this is a better question. Is there a number that everyone's comfortable with? Is there? There's not a silver bullet in it, right?
No, either hard.
I get it. It's, it's not like we have a rainy day fund just laying around that we can pull out of, and here we go.
What's the reason we're doing the playground?
That's for our playground.
I think you're putting fencer in the playground, keep people out of the field, like you.
Probably.
I don't have the detail of the subtotal.
Yeah, I just, I think it's.
Yeah.
I know, playground.
Okay, I can get it down to about a million dollars.
What?
I can get it down to about a million dollars. By eliminating the baseball field, the playground, and the parking lot.
We can eliminate the baseball field because we're gonna be in the exact same position if we only put in a softball field.
We talked about this last time. So we actually had a baseball field.
Yes.
And if we left it alone, and we didn't do it, then we resell the baseball field.
Correct.
Now, the one thing you don't have really is. Now, the one thing you don't have really is, it would eventually wind up being, like, the, the outfield of it, it would actually be sort of in, in, in part of the field of the, of the softball field. That's one problem. But keep in mind, I don't know that we're playing a lot of games there anyway, right? Not to mention the fact that if they needed to play a game, they could do that in another field. So in other words, it would still adequately serve as a, as a practice field, right?
Well, there's an asterisk there. If you looked at the grading plan and what has to happen, is we're gonna move the softball field to the proposed location, which is the most efficient location. Now you have to create the practice field for soft, or for football and potential soccer. You're going to destroy our existing field. So, and it has to move, has to move towards the school. But with all that construction, you won't be able to salvage what's there now.
So you can't just build another field and run it?
We've been told that by them, or?
As the one that did.
No, I believe that was what was instructed, the, uh, this Kramer, and they have to come in and do the mass grading. If you look at how the grading pans out and spreads out there, it would be, uh, we would be paying to get that field back to some sort of shape, cause you're gonna damage, you'll damage it during the construction. What's your, what's your stage here?
And then try to say, they said, you're gonna be spending more money.
It's obviously not gonna be the, the price of the total thing.
Sure, so are you still convinced that we need to have then a baseball field? Cause you just said we'd be in the same position, I, I don't know if that's the case. Somebody needed to bring a Title IX agreement, which they haven't done yet. But, let's assume that they, they would, what would the argument be that we don't have? Cause what we're trying to do is create a softball field that's commensurate with the existing baseball field that you have at the park.
But that was donated, so it's completely different, so we can't, football, we cannot match both of them. That was donated to the, by people for the city. That's the city, this is the school. So you can't take one away and say, oh, you can go to the city park and not have both for boys and girls. You just can't do it. Cause I guess we will be sued the exact same way, or have a Title IX.
That's not my understanding of what the attorney said when she was here.
But that's, of course, that's, that's the truth, that's the city and the school, so.
Were you here when she talked to us?
No.
Cause the entire conversation revolved around what they could do vis a vis what's already in place. And what's already in place, what we were comparing it to, is the, the boys' baseball field at the park.
I understand.
And that field at the park compared to the softball field at the park. And what was agreed to was that they really, they're equivalent, they're similar, but they're, it's certainly not, the, the softball field's not the same. And what we were trying to do was compensate for the field there to the field here. There, the entire time that we had that discussion, there was never one time where we talked about, what we need to do is build a baseball field and a softball field here. This has come up very recently, we started talking about the grading ground. We have gone from three hundred grand to two, almost three million dollars.
Well, I, I understand, I agree with you on that.
Ten times what we've all talked about originally.
I understand, but.
I'm starting to go back to, maybe we're better off spending money at the softball field at the park. And literally having the schools not even spend that. Keep in mind, we originally had that discussion. The whole idea was, well, we don't wanna put, bas- basically create assets into something that we don't own. We wanna hold those assets ourselves. It's a reasonable argument, depending on what the costs are.
But you still won't be in compliance.
According to you?
According to the title, the attorney.
Okay, she said, what, what would make us in compliance then?
We have to offer the same opportunity for the girls at the school as the boys.
I don't recall it, she said that we need to offer that at the school at all. Do you recall that? I'd love to have her back again, then we could.
So my, my understanding of the issues that the district faces is two pieces. One, the first piece is, is that the boys can walk out the back door, freshmen and sophomores can go to baseball practice. And the girls have to jump in the car, or get a ride, or a walk to the park to go to softball practice. So there's an inequity. So in order to fix that inequity, you need to get a softball field at school. The second inequity is, is that the girls do not have a varsity baseball field that is as good of quality as the baseball field at the park. So in order to fix those two things, you need to build a softball field that's the same quality as the baseball field at the park, and you need a practice facility here at school. So, Bill, if I'm understanding, Bill Wright, you don't necessarily have to touch the baseball field and the practice football field and soccer field and those types of things. It's just that when the site location was determined, and you start messing with those fields, and you wreck the other two things, now you've kinda created some more problems, right? So, and then I think that was their original proposal, is why don't you build a softball field up here? Cause then you wouldn't have to touch the practice football field, you wouldn't have to touch the baseball field. And you wouldn't have to do that, it's just that, you know, location wise, that was gonna serve to be pretty expensive to build somewhere else.
What if we took out the baseball field here? And we redid the baseball field at the park, or I'm sorry, the softball field at the park? Does that give us some compliance?
That's a, that's a good question, very good question.
See, I think it would.
That would get us, uh, in the compliance with the fact that everybody, boys and girls, would have to leave and go to the park to practice. And then you would be down to the issue of varsity softball versus varsity baseball, and making those two as equal as possible. What's that?
Then your varsity, your varsity will not have a practice field.
For the boys, when the girls do have a practice field on it.
Right, yeah, and you could, you could get some things from baseball that have about equity.
Well, we would, I, I'd be open in the discussing with the attorney, is it possible that we simply restrict and say, no, our kids can only, for the purposes of Waterloo Schools, we are only gonna use these two fields, there is no practice field for either one of them. The kids wanna go to a park or something, that's all they want.
That's impossible, like.
How do you have us work without a practice?
Yeah, the boys and girls both have practice fields, the girls are just down at the park, and then they have fields that they plant.
You're, you're telling me that you can't practice on any field?
They don't.
Well, I understand that they don't, but there's, there's no law that says you have to have that, right? You have to have a practice.
It's just more maintenance then, and then it's more upkeep, so then you're having to pay for that.
I agree. But, but there's no, there's nothing forcing us to do it. Cause what we keep going, what I keep going back to is what I'm being forced to do. Cause frankly, I think this is all bullshit together, okay? So all I wanna do is comply with what they're forcing me to do.
Yeah.
So if that's the case, then I don't wanna do the bare minimum of what they're forcing me to do in order to get the million dollars a year that they're holding over our heads in order to comply with this.
You're just gonna have to then, then it comes down to having to work with the city. And, and the schedule of the city, it's still park. So, and also schedules, and then on top of that, the fee schedules. The boys, they rake their fields, the girls, they don't want to rake their fields. So then that's gonna be another payment, I mean.
You could do an enormous amount of expense annually to save three million dollars.
I, I completely understand, I'm just saying, like, then that's gonna have to be something that is discussed with the city.
No, no, but even mine, I give that, that, here's why I wanna have a discussion of this way. Number one, you haven't been part of this.
Nope, that's why I'm not saying much.
So, I, I, I'm kinda doing it somewhat for your benefit, so you can understand how we got to this point. I think probably a bear majority on the board, I think, that we can charitable was just a purist of doing anything altogether, because we were here, effectively, we were looking at this. But when we had the attorney here, it became very clear that basically what they do, don't sue the school necessarily, they simply withhold funding. So the federal government gives us about a million dollars a year in federal funding, and they can simply unilaterally say, well, you're not in compliance with Title IX, whether we think so or not. And there is no going to court on it, they simply withhold the money. So, it really becomes an issue of, can we reasonably comply with that, with, with what the mandate would be? And keep in mind, we've been, we've had a complaint that's been let or lodged, sort of threatened. An official Title IX complaint is not, it's been threatened. And it's legitimate, it's probably going to happen if we don't do something.
Yeah.
So we eventually got to the point where we need to do something about it. And when we were first talking about, we were talking about just negotiating with the parks, of what can we do to make that field equivalent to the, to the lower field, the one that the boys use? That was what the whole conversation kinda circul- circulated around. But we started getting up into the hundred thousand dollar range, and more, half a million dollars, to redo that softball field, to make it more like the boys'. There's a bunch of drainage issues and all kinds of stuff, it doesn't have the same kind of infield makeup to it, the, the, what, the stone in it that, that makes up the infield is different, and it's better for the boys' time. So, uh, obviously there's a big expense there. When we started getting to the multiple hundreds of thousands, we started thinking, well, maybe we can spend that money here, and then it's our asset, we control it. But you gotta keep in mind, this is now ballooned from a few hundred thousand dollars to nearly three million.
No, it's gonna be like a million for the park. If you're gonna go and you're gonna update the softball field, it's gonna be like a million. With the drainage.
And you noticed the clothes?
Cause we haven't been for it.
Cause they haven't been for it.
You didn't?
Yeah. So it's gonna be like a million, so then you think about.
There were reasons you left out, Bill, in your recap.
Oh, no, but, but.
Um, there, we did see the conversation with the proposal from the park, we received that information. We also had received information from the park that they weren't necessarily willing to work with us, even with our money, to update that softball field. And, and it is a Title IX violation. I don't want to be a member of the board that is okay with a Title IX violation. We're saying it's okay for us to have inequity between our sexes in this school.
And I don't, and I'm gonna correct you, Susan, I don't think the city did not want the, the money, it's the fact that it's the park. So it's really hard when you guys, the school, go in and will say, okay, hey, we'll pay for upgrade on the softball field, but then what if somebody comes in that's not a part of the school and damages it? Yes, it damaged the city park, it's city park. So, the school has no control over that. The city, you know, yes, hopefully we'd be able to find that, but that's, it's very hard to do a donation to a city park and to upgrade a city park for just the varsity softball scheme.
Correct.
You know, so I think that's, it's not that we didn't want the money at the city, it's just, it's very hard, because then it makes a very sticky situation, and then the girls won't want anybody on that field, and, and it'll just be, it's not good. So, that is the reason why you came back here, and then we, that's where we're at today, is we came back here because.
Chad, if we, if we gave the parking dollars, or maybe if you did the softball field or not, in your opinion?
If I had this weekend, say if we have, if I would have this weekend, we say, please, if we have this, I would say, I don't know. Cause like, there's a lot more than parks, there's several people who don't have to accept that money, but to have the school invest a million dollars in a city park, it will not be a sole varsity softball field, it will be a city.
Park.
Baseball, softball.
Yeah, well, but, but keep in mind, that's not part of, we have to create something to equip them. So right now, the lower diamond is the boys' use, anybody can use that part. That's not the boys' field. That's not one, right? So.
Varsity field is used by five or six different organizations, including the high school varsity.
But we didn't invest in varsity, we had no whole district, we had donated.
I agree, and what, what, wait, for your back, but, what the attorney essentially said was, that was one of the arguments that kept, kept coming up, is, uh, does it matter who spent the money on the field? And that was a big point of contention, and she basically said this, it doesn't really matter who spent the money on the field. It's what services do, are being offered to these two respective groups of kids.
What is, um, what is not equivalent down at the park between softball and baseball? I mean, other than the obvious, big concrete steps around the outside, beautiful river water for the outside. What, what, what needs to, what's missing there?
Yeah, they have a million dollar donation made for that baseball field. And that's, that's it, and then the girls have practice fields, they have the, but yeah, it's not, I mean, it's, it's a city park, so.
So, Chad, what's the difference in your mind?
Um, it's a red, granite, granite mix with infield sprinkler system, outfield tiling system. It's got backup, which is, for the girls, that's, I mean, a lot of it's just aesthetics, because nobody knows, they're looking at it for the sketch sprinklers, just for drainage.
The drainage sprinkler system. There is also a big problem with the drainage in that, it, it's like higher in the outfield than it is in, uh, in the infield, right? You're going to right field or something, or is it too low in, in right field?
Problem is, there's drainage off the street that will hit right field. That'll make it appear to be lower. Elevation's across the field, it's pretty similar.
Yeah, essentially, they would make a checklist of all the things the baseball field has, and then if the softball field doesn't have those, then it's not the same, right? Like irrigation, or drainage.
Which see, you know, doesn't make much sense, cause you don't irrigate the dirt of the infield of the softball field, but they do for the baseball field.
See, that's another thing that we've never done here. What we're doing is we're going on everybody's sort of opinion on what they think that these Title IX attorneys are gonna come back to us with. Maybe a better answer is to actually say, let's, let's assume there is a Title IX, like an official one. Can you send somebody else, have him look at these two fields, interview everybody at the parks department, and you tell me what, what would need to happen to that field there in order to make it equivalent to that field there, in your opinion? Give us a list of that.
Did we have the attorney come in and go through that with us?
Only, only sort of on a tangential basis, so we were describing, I, I'm interested in visiting the fields, right?
Um, I think she did, I think she drove through.
Okay. But it's, I mean, she, she's not gone into it nearly as in depth as, as we have, and as you can see, there's even some recollection differences. I'm not, I'm not trying to. I, I'm glad everybody else has contributed on what was said previously, okay? If I misremembered, then I'm not trying to, quote you, whatever, yeah, I'm just trying to give you what the history of this was, how we got to this point. Cause nobody in this, in this group raised their hand at any point, says, you know what? I wanna spend three million dollars on two new baseball fields out there. Not one person ever said that, we won't update. And all I'm saying is, now that we're here, this cost, which I don't think anybody predicted early on, Brian maybe might have thought that it was gonna go there, cause he's got more history with this than somebody like me does. I'm now rethinking conversations that we had earlier on, and revising, maybe there's a better way. Because now that we're at three million dollars, this is really, really hard to justify to a community. No, yeah, but it's, it's hard for me to justify spending three million dollars because somebody made a touchdown. Legitimate or not, when any reasonable human being that's gone to that park and seen either of those two fields, and where these two groups play, would, would say, we have, we have beautiful facilities for both of them, we're lucky to have them.
Yeah.
Nobody, no reasonable person that lives in this community would go there and say. So how are, if somebody called me on the phone tomorrow and asked, well, how do you just justify this? I'd have to go through this whole engine right now, I don't know how I'm supporting this. And that's why I'm trying to backdate to at least a number that, man, it's somewhat justifiable for the bare minimum of stuff, but if what you're saying is true, that we can't do just the softball field, and we have to do the baseball field, we have more than doubled our costs. And what we've gotten here is very, very typical mission creep. This happens all, I see this all the time in, in projects like this. We do start with one thing, and we add another, and we add another, and some of it is reasonable. Like, the fact that we did talk in a prior meeting about, well, if we're gonna do all this, whether we're gonna put lights in or not, it does pay to spend maybe another thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars to, to put it underground utilities, so that if you do put lights in it someday, you don't gotta tear up the whole field to do that. That, that, I, that is reasonable. When we're, when we're already at a million plus, what's another thirty grand? I agree with them, I can see that one. But that's not really what we're talking about here.
Well, the scary part is we do this for even two point four to three million. And then we'd be an operating referendum in another, what, two years or three years? That's, that's a hard one to get the community worked up to.
Yes.
So right now, if we were to, if I had to vote on, am I good with this budget, I'm, I'm a simple though? I'm, I'm a simple though. Um, I don't know that there's frankly a way to get me on board with it right now, minus more discussions at the very least with council. Now that I know what these numbers are. To me, this, this changes the paradigm altogether.
I know the Badgers gave up boys' baseball to meet their own Title IX requirements.
And I, I floated that idea as well. Well, one easy solution to this problem, mate, it would not be a popular one, is you eliminate baseball altogether and softball altogether at Waterloo. Now you can imagine how gigantic this is, and that would be, but that is also a solution to this problem. It costs zero dollars.
Right now.
You lose enrollment. Then you can lose enrollment without your money.
Yeah, you'll lose enrollment big time if you did that.
So, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, please, if I'm wrong. So I think right now, what we did in that other meeting is we looked at the cost-effective way to get the things done that help us get to our master plan eventually, and then we do the preliminary budget, then we get some more concrete numbers, and then we can make more decisions. So this is just at the point to help us get more budgeted numbers, more accurate numbers, correct? And then we can still pull apart and still make decisions from there. Or is this more...
Yeah, but I think if I'm understanding Bill correctly and like, you know, we might be at two point three, but we're not down to one million.
Right.
Yeah, maybe we might get some, some good bids and it comes in lower, but we're not down to where Bill's talking.
Moreover, like, I deal with this in insurance claims all the time. There are two things, when you're negotiating, say, with a contractor or the insurance carrier, over what should a, what should repairs cost? There's two different aspects of it. There's the, the price that you pay per unit, and then there's what we call the scope of loss. What's actually being done? How much stuff is being done? How many square feet of flooring, ceiling tile, and whatever else? Okay? So what I'm trying to do is, I, I think we need to reach an agreement first, conceptually, on what we agree that the scope that we're going to do is. How much stuff is going to be done? Are we gonna do two diamonds? Are we gonna do a parking lot? Those, because now we know what that, what those costs roughly are going to be untold. And then once we've agreed to the scope, then we obviously need to go back and work on pricing and get competitive bids for all the stuff once you've determined what the scope is. But you guys are right, we can't even, we can't even direct people to bids until we've at least said, well, this is what we want to do. Like, we ought to agree what we want to do first, right?
I think that's what our building and grounds committee did at their committee meeting.
They went through line by line to figure out what was necessary and what was not, and moved the stuff that they did not.
Am I obligated to agree with the grounds committee?
No, but that's where this conversation...
This is why it's...
Restructured to a...
I'm aware of that. I'm not, I'm not, are we doing anything wrong? I support them entirely, but all I'm saying is I disagree and I'm no vote right now. So if we've got enough votes to go through with this, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm cool with that.
I'm just wondering, Bill, when you, when we came and we put those little softball fields and the little baseball field and soccer and track and you did all that, did you not think it was gonna be this number, or did you, because...
No, I, I had a pretty good idea what this was gonna be.
Oh.
I've been, I've been fighting to constrain this thing since day one.
Okay. I just, I just...
I, I don't know that my position on that has changed at all.
Okay.
In fact, initially, I had argued that we weren't gonna move, I don't know how many cubic yards of dirt on the top of the hill.
Why? I just, I just...
That was my first battle, just to get the list going.
Yep. But exactly why we're here, because we don't want to get further down the rabbit hole and have this discussion and say, oh, we're gonna, oh, we're... So...
So, I mean, listen, if we've got four out of seven, four out of seven votes right now to go forward with this, with, with this scope, I think we should do that and then kind of model, for most parts, what you guys have in mind, I mean.
I don't, we don't spend a dollar's money either.
Well, I'm, I'm...
It's pretty hard against the two for the giggle, but at, at what point do you do something halfway or, you know, not right? I think that's from that. And Terry and I discussed it on the right meeting and say, at what point do you skip all of something and the taxpayers come back, say, hey, why, he spends all his money, but why don't you include this little bit to finish the project, make it right?
Yeah, my mind, you're arguing against that, I said, I think the number of people that would come back later on and say that are very few in part.
He's looking probably fifty, fifty, maybe.
Fifty, fifty, probably.
Or be twenty.
Still talk about the gym, and we just allowed people to eat in the gym, and that was like the biggest thing. Why can't we eat in the gym? And, yeah, trust me, people find something to complain about if we're spending this type of money.
Well, all I'll say is there's never gonna be a point in time, I'm aware of it, that we're just gonna really, 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 let's throw through a million dollars at it that we don't essentially have, right? But schools don't grow and, and get bigger and communities don't grow like people. I guess we're taking a risk, but this provides, allows us to provide the best for our students and solve our equity issue. So...
The, the attorney made it very clear, if we start fighting this legally, that will be a rabbit hole that we don't win. Well, in part, with the federal government, my Title IX, school district's still on the edge.
Yeah, and keep in mind, I haven't suggested that. My, my suggestion was maybe we go back and entertain their input on it before we start making three million dollar decisions. That was my opinion.
So if we ask you now, is there more discussion, or we need to vote a vote?
So just reminding you of the next step, we're just gonna make that numbers, pull it all together, is that what we're doing for us?
Essentially, we would be voting, in my mind, to move forward, to gain, I guess, a better grasp of the scope of work and the true costs associated. But we're not, I mean, a vote tonight is not approved, we're, we're starting to throw some shovels out there.
We're just, we're just gonna vote for bid.
That's what I mean.
So we're not financially obligating ourselves to anything tonight? Is that the goal? Is that the, whatever motion would be made tonight would be to move forward to garner additional bids?
To bids?
And I guess I'm not clear, bids? I'm not...
Yeah, th- this is not authorizing spending of money in any way, shape or form. This is simply to allow the Point of Beginnings in Kramer to start honing in on the project and get actual numbers for you then to make a final decision on it. I mean, it, it all, it all can't just happen at once, right? Like, we need to start talking with bond counsel. It takes, you know, three or four months to do all of that stuff and, like, we can talk to them, but like, what do I tell them? Hey, we're gonna do a project? I, you know, if you pass this, I can say, hey, we're thinking about, you know, two point four to two point eight million in bonds, can you start, you know, preparing documents for the board to review related to that?
Kramer's gonna have to take up two months' time to, and then the site plan, all the specs, all the stuff to even get it...
But I, but I will say that, you know, too, because there's a pretty large discrepancy in the conversation we're talking about, because I heard Bill say a million dollars. Like, if we're only gonna do a million dollar project, then I really don't wanna have Point of Beginnings draw two point eight million dollars worth of stuff. So Bill's question, you know, is pretty legitimate, because that's a large discrepancy on what kind of...
I, I think it's fair to say that if you approve this as presented, you're agreeing on the scope of work. Right?
Uh, that's my question, yes.
For softball, baseball, and football slash...
And, and parking lot and playground and, yeah, all stuff. All stuff was been on the summary page, basically.
Yeah. It's not a playground, it's a fencing, it's a...
It's, it's what?
It's fencing.
It's fencing round.
Yeah, and we talked about that in the committee meeting, that, you know, the administration is gonna recommend that as a project, even if this all goes away tomorrow, because we've needed playground fencing for, for years and it's this A P issue, and it just seemed like the appropriate time since it was on our site plan to include that, so...
Well, Bill, I hate to say after a good discussion.
No, it, it, listen, this is the point I love to hear, I'm not, I would love it if you'd agree with me, but I, I didn't go into this thinking that that was going to happen, so...
No, I, well, you've heard me before, I'm a big one on earthworks upfront, and I guess, I know that's where your champion is going, so, that's my thought, proceed with a good share of the scope as presented.
Do you make an emotion?
Yes, I will make that as a motion.
Is there a second? Awesome. All right, a motion by Mr. Kramer, seconded by Mr. Yurgis. And I guess to clarify their, their motion is to proceed, move forward, to clarify the budget for a softball, baseball, and football slash soccer field as presented, preliminary budget items.
So can you, because I, I know we have Newsbead attending tonight, we've thrown around a lot of numbers, so can the motion include the number that is in here, two point four to two point eight million?
Yes.
So that, that gets presented in the paper correctly?
So you read it, it's in the motion, you still agree with that? And I would recommend that we take this to a roll call.
Great, yes.
Probably yes. I mean, yes.
Yurgis, yes.
All right, we proceed with a six one vote. Again, to go get revised budgetary numbers on that targeted two point four to two point eight million expenditure. Good discussion by all, thank you. All right, on to action item F, west wall outside pool doors replacement. This was brought up in the Building and Grounds Committee meeting as well. The, this is the lowest estimate, to replace said doors which are thirty years old-ish.
That's what we're guessing, yeah.
So the committee approved this expenditure to replace the doors as listed here in your informer packet. Any questions regarding the doors, non-replacement, because we don't need to, so that's, they're, they're quite dated and they're oral, need to be replaced.
Do you make that motion to approve?
Second. Okay, got a motion by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Dolphin, to approve the west wall outside pool doors as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Brings us to action item G, the declaration of educational standards. It's recommended that the school district utilize the, the standards, excuse me, listed in your informer packet. I don't think you need me to read them all. Is there any questions in regards to the recommendation? Here you go, I'm looking for a motion.
All right, motion, seven, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, Declaration of Educational Standards.
This is second.
All right, got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Ms. Cummings to adopt or utilize, excuse me, utilize the standards for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Action item H, the second reading of the two thousands and five thousand policy documents. Um, you have those, a bunch of policies in your informer packet, but again, this is the second reading, so we've been through them once. Is there any discussions regarding the two thousands and five thousands?
Probably several, it feels a lot of reading.
It is a lot of reading.
Yes.
I'll look to go through the second reading of the two thousand and five thousand policies. Cummings, the second.
Okay, got a motion on the floor by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve the second reading of the two thousand and five thousand policies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven oh vote. Action item I, second reading of the other policies. Looks like we've got some three thousands, some seven thousands, a one eight thousand and one nine thousand policy. Again, you have the copy in your packet. Any questions, discussion here? I believe these were ones that were revised, because you had some small iterations on and...
Yeah, the committee asked us to go back and, yeah, mark certification, you know.
Also move for approval.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Kramer, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve the second reading of the aforementioned other policies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh vote. And here we are, the end. So, action item J, it's the final approval of all policies, zero through the nine thousands. The committee has put a bunch of work in, the administration has put work in, the EOLA, we've approved all of the first and second readings of all of the policies for the district, and now we're at the well to prove everything and enact down here in one fell swoop. Is there any discussion before we make this motion? I would only ask how quickly, we have all the finished packet, it's ready, we get on the website, it's...
Uh, yeah, it's...
All the offerings that they've...
Like, go, um, to Bethany, correct me if I'm wrong, that we can click go fairly quickly. I mean, we already have the first update, so we'll have to schedule a policy, even specifically around some Title IX stuff, so...
Sure. All right?
I'll move for the final approval of all policies, zero through nine thousands. Cummings, the second.
All right, we got a motion on the floor by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to make the final approval of all policies, the zeros through the nine thousands, or the entire policies for the district, to be enacted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Thank you, everyone, you've put a lot of work into doing that, Tom. Uh, action item K, it's a discussion, rather, the, do you find a ready board retreat, June twenty sixth? Um, any takeaways that you guys would like to discuss? Again, I apologize if I wasn't there, but, um, it sounds like I missed a good one.
There's a lot to speak. With our presenter and our board input, there's a lot of energy in number one, and our administrator, and I think we're onto something, really, to, to really try to get students much more engaged in their education, not just them, the high school level, all the way through. And, um, granted, this is a movement, and season two is grab the hold of it, but it sure makes sense to me. And, um, even data from Japan and elsewhere, so I, I think we're at the something here that is really engaging. So it's good air.
Charlie said it first.
Did find out.
Thanks.
All right, is there any other discussion regarding the board retreat? I guess I would ask a question, is there interest for additional engagements like that? Is it beneficial, I'm not saying we're gonna have one, we're on the deep end of it.
Yeah.
Maybe not the timeframe of it, but...
All right, moving right along, I'll make the motion to go into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen eighty five, paragraph one, C and E, for the items listed in your packets, opposed to. Uh, that is a, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay. That's, we'll call a vote. Gray, yes.
Dolphin, yes.
Probably yes.
Schneider, yes?
I mean, having is yes.
Yurgis, yes.
All right, we're now in closed session. Let's take a ten minute recess, we'll allow you to tear down, sir, and continue on.